To order, this is the discussion of the Emeryville Go-Round Shuttle and the Citywide Property Business Improvement District. And I see that we're all here, so I will pass on that. Public comment? Seeing no one standing for public comment, I guess it's ready for the study session. Karen, I'm going to turn it over to you.
And so this evening's study session is on the Emeryville Go-Round Shuttle, which is funded primarily by the Citywide Property-Based Business Improvement District, the P-Bid, and is currently administered by the Emeryville Transportation Management Association.
Can people hear? It's hard to hear.
Okay, I guess I'll need to speak louder. Louder. Okay, so tonight's study session is on the Emeryville Go-Round Shuttle, which is primarily funded by the Citywide Property-Based Business Improvement District, which is a citywide assessment on commercial property. And the shuttle is funded by the P-Bid and is administered by the Emeryville Transportation Management Association, which is a private nonprofit that consists of those commercial entities that pay into the P-Bid or into the Emeryville Go-Round Shuttle. So with me this evening, I have two members of the, I have Gray and, sorry, Trudy and Ronnie from the, from Gray Boeing Associates, which is under contract with the TMA to manage the shuttle on an ongoing basis. And also with us today is Jeff Sears, who, are you the president of the TMA board right now?
Treasurer.
Treasurer of the TMA board right now.
There's more board members.
And I think there are some other board members.
Andrew Allen.
Ah, yes.
Bob Cantor.
So several board members, Andrew Allen and Bob Cantor also from the TMA board. So this study session will be given kind of in three different parts. And I'll start with the city and... It's me? So it's three different parts, as you can see. So it'll start with city staff, myself, talking a little bit about the Emeryville Go-Round and Transportation Management Association origins and the history of the P-Bid itself. And then the TMA will talk about the P-Bid and the TMA around governance issues, an upcoming election to the board that will be happening on May 16th. They will also give some background on current Emeryville Go-Round shuttle operations and budget, as well as operational challenges and trends. Then it'll go back to city staff, and we'll talk about some of the particular concerns around the Emeryville Go-Round shuttle. One, you will hear from the TMA some operational challenges that the city may wish to address. There's also a need for a long-term bus yard, we'll talk a little bit about that later, as well as some upcoming issues around the renewal of the P-Bid that sunsets in 2016, as well as the proposed Emeryville-Berkley-Oakland Transit Transportation Alternatives, called EBOT, that Diana Kena from the Planning Department has been working on and may impact the shuttle in the future. And then there'll be a few things that we're going to ask the city council to weigh in on. A lot of this is background, some of you may, I think the last time we did this was 2008, that was any kind of study session on the Emeryville Go-Round Shuttle. So for some of you, some of this will be very new. For others of you, it's been, you know, five years since you've kind of had a status report on the Emeryville Go-Round Shuttle. And also, there's been increased interest, particularly by the Emeryville Property Association, Emeryville Property Owners Association around the Emeryville Go-Round. And I attended their general membership not too long ago and suggested that they may wish to hear this presentation because there was a lot of misinformation or lack of information around the shuttle. So this is designed to provide that information to a wide audience, as well as to the council, and hopefully give staff some direction on a few issues. So, I'm sorry. So first of all, the Emeryville Go-Round started as a public-private partnership in 1994. And the background was, and I was there then and had the pleasure to work on the creation of the shuttle then. And the background was that there were, that was kind of the beginning of Emeryville really starting its development initiatives. And one of the early recognitions is that with the lack of kind of a very thorough transportation grid, the inability to really be able to rely upon single occupancy vehicles, and in fact, the preference not to rely upon single occupancy vehicles to get people to and from Emeryville and around Emeryville, that alternatives should be considered. At the time, there were several independent shuttles that operated either from some of the hotels, or for example, what was then the Watergate Towers owned by Gulf and Lethrop, and a few others had them. And increasingly, as the city was looking at developing, there was a concern that rather than having these proliferation of independent shuttles, there'd be better to kind of look at one unified shuttle that businesses could pay into. And so that was kind of how the Emeryville Go-Round was born. And it probably ended up being a little bit bigger than originally expected because about this time, AC Transit was experiencing quite a few service cutbacks during two budget woes, and had cut service, like for example, to the peninsula, the Watergate Peninsula. And so that was kind of how the Emeryville Go-Round was born. So the city proposed to eight major developers and employers, commercial property owners, to do a joint public-private partnership. And the deal was that the first year, essentially, the private sector would provide about, it was about 40% of the shuttle cost, with the city providing, the redevelopment agency providing some, and there was also some grants from outside agencies. And that the expectation was that within three years, that the shuttle would be 100% privately funded, and that the businesses, the commercial properties that were paying into the Emeryville Go-Round would assume administration of the shuttle, with the city agreeing to administer the shuttle for the first three years. And success was that after one year, which was the initial pilot, was that it would be considered success, and we would go into that three-year kind of commitment from the business community if the shuttle ridership was at least 30% higher in one year than the combined ridership of all the independent shuttles. That target was reached the first week of the shuttle. So the first three years, it was, the agreement for the Emeryville Go-Round was through a city-private participation agreement, which specified member contributions, minimum service levels, routes and governance, and that the city administered the Emeryville Go-Round. And the private sector funding grew from about 40% the first year to 90% in the third year. And by that time also, it was operated by the TMA that would help getting funded with that through a Caltrans grant that the city helped them to get. So we didn't quite get to the 100% private funding, but to get to 90% in three years was significant. So, I have clicker issues. So, by 1997, the TMA membership expanded to 17 members, a mixture of developer agreements, conditions of approval, and voluntary contributions. And these were primarily from those large property owners, such as, again, the Watergate Towers at the time, that had their own independent shuttles and thought it was a good thing just to do the unified shuttle. And that the TMA board consisted of all the members, which at that time was 17 members to the TMA, and was institutionalized through a membership participation agreement among themselves. And there was a minimal city financial contribution, no more than 10% during this period. And the city went from managing the shuttle to being a liaison to the TMA board with no voting rights. And this was a period of great expansion in ridership and demand for more capacity. So by 2001, capacity, the ridership had expanded beyond anyone's wildest imaginations. It was, and that, this really went far beyond what 17 commercial entities could sustain because there were a lot of folks writing it that were not contributing. And it really became part of the city's infrastructure in many ways. Certainly, I would say, the lifeblood to the city's commercial businesses, retail centers, definitely. So the TMA and the city reviewed some of the funding options that were available. And the funding option that was selected was a property-based business improvement district, which is something that is under state law. And it's something that is, must be agreed to by a majority of those that are being assessed, with the voting based upon the weight of the assessment. And the plan and the assessment levy formula is developed by an independent engineer's report, and then adopted by the city after approval by the commercial property owners that would be affected by it. The initial assessment was 17 cents per square foot for commercial industrial properties, sorry, commercial office retail properties, and .085 for industrial. So industrial and manufacturing properties paid half of what office, retail, and commercial properties did. And at that time, residential use, residential use properties, whether rental or home ownership, and commercial properties in residentially zoned areas were exempted. As well as any property that would otherwise have been in the P-Bid that was more than 1,000 feet from the shuttle. At this time, the TMA board membership consisted of the seven top P-Bid-assessed commercial property owners and a representative from the Chamber of Commerce. And the conditions of approval and developer agreements that were in place before the P-Bid was established were considered fulfilled by the city as long as the P-Bid was in place. Now, there were a few projects that could not be assessed through the P-Bid, pretty much, for example, those properties are in Oakland that are part of the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center. So those are direct bills, is what the TMA and staff calls them, and that they get a bill directly from the TMA, and their assessment is set at the same level as if they were in the P-Bid. And through this, there began to be the beginning of some residential complexes being, contributing to the shuttle, as the city began putting conditions of approval on new residential complexes as well. So in 2006, the P-Bid was renewed. Under the original P-Bid, general law cities could only have a P-Bid for five years. That was now changed to 10. So the current P-Bid is from 2006 to 2016. And for the 2006 P-Bid, there were some changes to state law that allowed rental housing and live-work units to be assessed, except for those in residentially zoned areas. So essentially, commercial housing, housing that there was a business license involved in, was able to be assessed in the citywide P-Bid. And the TMA board member expanded to include one property owner-at-large, one of them, someone that was not part of the Big Seven, so to speak, as well as a representative from one of the housing complexes that had been assessed through direct bill. In other words, were not represented through the P-Bid because they weren't part of the P-Bid. So they were in the renewal, given a seat on the board by the TMA. And as I said, it was for a 10-year period. So this is just to give you some sense of the contributions by parcel tax, sorry, by parcel type. So if you notice, that city-owned parcels represent 1.7% of the entire assessment, so a very, very small portion. And essentially, the city pays according to the properties that it owns. Under P-Bids, public-owned entities are not exempt. However, there have been several public agencies that have not historically contributed to the P-Bid, such as the US Post Office, AC Transit, and the Emory Unified School District. And that represents the bulk of the uncollectible or non-collected assessments. This gives you a sense that the vast majority of the P-Bid, 78% of the funds come from retail office and mixed-use parcels. Industrial warehouse is about 10%. And that very small bit of the non-P-Bid are the direct bills, just to give you a sense of that. Another question that was asked was the breakdown of who was on the board. So the seven seats that are on the board, the seven permanent seats represent about 41% of the total assessment. Then there's a business rep that represents the other property owners. And originally, the Chamber of Commerce was really seen also as a general business representative as well. But rather than just the chamber, the TMA decided there would be an elected representative as well. And the city remains as a non-voting liaison. So now I'm going to turn it over to the TMA staff, and they will go through some of the current information around operations, revenues, expenditures, and some of the challenges and trends. And I don't know, Ronnie, if you want to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Karen.
Good evening. My name is Trudy Presser, and I'm here with my coworker, Ronnie Hatrup. So we're going to play a little tag team here on our presentation. As Karen mentioned, she went over what we're going to speak tonight. We are going to focus on where we are today and give you some ideas of why we have some challenges with our system and what we think are some of our needs are. So first, a brief recap, because Karen did cover some of this, just how we are governed and how we're governed today. So first of all, we are governed by our bylaws, and the last time they were amended and restated were in 2007. Basically, the bylaws show how our board is to be structured. It talks about the duties and the powers of our board members, and it talks about how we are to correspond with our membership. That's basically embodied in our bylaws. Because we receive the funding from the P-Bid by P-Bid statute, we are to be compliant with the Brown Act and Public Records Act. So in that regard, all of our board meetings are noticed and are in a public forum, and we meet, our standing time is the Thursday of every month as needed. Our organization, we do have our boards, and I'm going to go over the makeup of our board members today. We have a 10-member board. And Gray Bowen, my firm and Ronnie's, we are staffed, we provide the staff for the association. And then we manage for the association. Our main contract is our operations and maintenance, and it's currently held by MB Transportation. We just recently did a solicitation and hired a new operator, and Ronnie specifically will talk a little bit about how that's going. And as Karen said, Karen acts as our liaison and comes to all our meetings from the city. This is our current slate of board members. We have seven corporate members. I'll explain that a little bit on the next slide. And one of those corporate members is here, which is Jeff Sears from Warehand Development. We have one seat that's held as an at-large position, representing the smaller businesses, Andrew Allen, who is also here today. And we have an at-large residential seat on our board, which is currently vacant. And lastly, we have public member, Chamber of Commerce, and Bob Cantor is also here tonight. Our board seats is a three-year term, and this is a busy month for us because this is the end of our three-year term, and we have elections actually next week, May 16th. It's our annual membership meeting, as well as we'll be holding elections for our board, and new appointments are due by next week. And at that point, we also, our board will elect board positions. Karen mentioned some of this. There are, the seven members of our board are made up of corporate directors. These are the members who pay the largest fees into the P-Bid or to the association. We will have one change on our board this year for those appointments, and that is TMG Partners will be replaced by LBA. And LBA is the owner of the towers and several other parcels in the city. We will, for the two at-large positions, residential and business, this is an elected position. The ballots are out right now. Each of the members in that class can vote for their representative, and we will be holding elections for those next week. And then lastly, our public member, by our bylaws, the Chamber of Commerce is a predetermined public member. But our bylaws do allow the board to designate additional public members, but at this date, there's only one, and that is the Chamber of Commerce. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ronnie, who runs our operations and finance.
Good evening. The primary function of the Emeryville TMA is to operate the Emeryville Go-Round Shuttle service. So I'll go a little bit over our routes and our ridership trends. Oops, use my slideshow here. The Emeryville Go-Round provides the last-mile transit connection from the Bart Station and the Capitol Corridor to the Emeryville, to Emeryville Businesses and Retail Centers. It also allows people who live in the city to have their first-mile connection made on transit. It also allows people to move within the city during the day for shopping, meetings, and restaurants. All of our buses are wheelchair-accessible, and shuttles, the service is provided at no charge to our riders. Upon doing this, we improve the accessibility and mobility and traffic congestion throughout the city. While our focus today is on the Emery Go-Round, we also partner with the city to run the Eight-to-Go Shuttle operation, which is a free door-to-door service, which provides door-to-door service to the citizens over 60 years and people who are ADA-qualified. We also partner with the Berkeley Gateway TMA to run another free last-mile shuttle service from the Ashby Bart Station to the West Berkeley area. This here is a look at our service map, service area map. This map is incorporated into our route guide, which we've handed out, and our annual report, which was actually just published this week. The route here, we have three main routes. We have the Hollis Route, which is the red line that goes up, the Hollis Line, all the way up to the Berkeley Bowl and comes back down. All of our routes operate out of the McArthur Bart Station. That's our main hub. I'll skip down to the Watergate, which is shown in the green there, the aqua color. That is an express route that serves during the peak commute hours during the weekdays to just that little Watergate Peninsula area over there. The Hollis Route, I should say, also runs during only the weekdays. The purple line there is the Shellmount Powell Line. We also refer to that as our shopper route, and it serves weekdays and weekends. We did conduct a ridership survey in the fall of 2011, about a year and a half ago. The results that we found were shared in our 2011 annual report, not to be confused with one we just submitted, which was the 2012. The purpose of the survey was to gain feedback on our service, identify areas needing improvement, identify how the service is used, and to gain information to assist us in the performance evaluation of the operator, of the current operator. Some important things to note, we conducted the survey over the course of one month. We collected 500 surveys in the course of that one month, and which is basically 10% of our daily ridership. The survey was not performed in a structured manner, as would be expected, to support operational or policy decisions. And the survey was collected at a time when ridership was lower than today's level and during the height of the economic downturn. Here are the results from the survey. I'll go through a few slides here. When we asked the riders, "How satisfied are you with our service?", we received an overwhelmingly supportive response of "very satisfied". The blue there shows the 91% are extremely satisfied, very satisfied, or just satisfied. When we asked, "How would you rate our reliability?", again, really good response rate, very reliable being the blue and reliable being the red. We won't talk about the green. When we asked, "What is your destination today?", of those who responded, it looked like there was a majority of them, 57%, were using the service to commute to or from work, followed by shopping and other destinations. When we asked if our drivers are courteous and helpful, again, overwhelming response of yes, they are, 92%. When we asked, "How often do you use Emery Go-Round?", appears that the people that completed the survey were quite frequent users. There's 51% daily, and 38% there is one to four times a week. And again, when we, of those people who responded, when we asked where you live, and 44% of them responded Emeryville or the surrounding areas, followed by Oakland and San Francisco. We continue, we haven't conducted a ridership in 2012. We do receive ongoing positive feedback. We have a website, a hotline, and we also attend some various city events, like, not city events, but public events such as Earth Days and transit fairs. We get an overwhelming response of people loving the system and using it. But we do have complaints, and most of them are these three items: the inaccurate next-time, next-bus real-time predictions, unreliable service, and overcrowded buses. To address some of these complaints, we, with regards to the next-bus predictions, we are working with Next Bus and our operator, MV, to update the equipment and train our operators on the system. With regard to the unreliable service and overcrowded buses, our new operator, MV, which started just this past March, service has improved tremendously. We are currently conducting a route analysis, always looking for ways to improve our system. And however, we do continue to struggle to meet the demands of our increased ridership and aging fleet issues within the current funding amount that we have. Here's a graph of our ridership trend. This is over the past five years. You'll notice that we did have a consistent trend at about 1.3 million riders, and last year, we really felt the impact of the increase in ridership, up to almost just under 1.5 million riders. This is when we noticed more of the hits on our service, our buses and all of that. Now I'll go into the TMA financials. Over the past few years, costs have been exceeding the revenues, primarily due to increases in fuel costs, maintenance costs because of, due to our aging fleet, and service costs caused by the increased ridership. Here's a little graph that depicts the 10-year cost and revenue trends. You'll see there, the revenue is shown in yellow and the expenditures are shown in blue. The last two years, you'll notice we have trended over, the expenditures have trended over the costs, over the revenue, sorry, the revenue. Here is a graphic of our 2013 budget. This was approved by the council earlier this year. This is just a different format to show kind of where the pieces of the pie are coming from. Our revenue is shown on the left-hand side, primarily our revenues, we were funded by the P-Bid. Karen had mentioned also in her presentation that we have a few direct-bill parcels that we bill for. That's shown in blue, and we have some other little charter services and real-time signage revenues that we get from our customers. And we also have revenue from the Berkeley Gateway TMA for the West Berkeley Shuttle. And our expenditures, they're shown on the right. You can see that the pinkish stamming color is our operations contract. The blue, the 345, is our maintenance costs. The 305 in the yellow there is our professional services cost, and fuel is in the green up on top there at $285,000. Those are our primary costs. And I'll turn it back over to Trudy for the needs and challenges.
Thank you.
I'm the needy one here. So following on a lot of what Ronnie just showed you, which is our current financials and how we're operating, and some of the things that I'm going to tell you are not going to be surprised after her presentation. Starting just with our operations and administration costs, just based on inflation... Starting just with our operations and administration costs, just based on inflation alone, we predict in the coming years, they'll be increasing 2% to 3%. But if the ridership does continue to increase, we expect these costs to be even potentially We have quite a bit of a challenge, we believe, ahead of us on our capital expenses as it relates to our maintenance costs with our fleet. To give you an idea, new shuttle bus costs approximately $140,000. If it was a transit coach, it's, those cost about $400,000. Buses, rule of thumb, lifespan is about 10 to 15 years for the types of vehicles that we own. We have a fleet of 17, 16 buses and one van for our Emery Go-Round service, and of those, seven of our buses are under five years old, which is great. Five buses plus our van, you could consider is in its midlife, but it's the bottom bullet that provides us the most challenge, and that's four of our buses are getting close to their full life expectancy. And our buses, because of what you're seeing here, do break down a bit, and that is what's causing challenges to meet the reliability of service. We are happy to report that our new operator is quite nimble, and we hope that continues, but they are working very hard to mitigate when buses go down. We currently lease our bus yard from LBA, but we're in need of a permanent home, and I know Karen will speak to that further in her presentation. As Ronnie reported, the current P-Bid assessments are not covering our forecasted costs. We're very close to that. The P-Bid is up for renewal in 2016, and as you're hearing, our service is widely popular, and the demand appears to be continuing on the rise with, hopefully, the economy continuing to go in the right direction. Our customer complaints about our unreliability and our full buses should be addressed through our long-term fleet expansion and revenue enhancement. So with that, the TMA is looking forward to the city's assistance in finding ways to overcome these challenges. Thank you.
So just to give a little bit more information on some of the challenges and trends, is as you just heard, that ridership spiked in the past year and went from one, it'd been about 1.3 million, 1.3 million boardings for about two or three years, and that was in the middle of the recession. And unlike other transit operators that actually had dips in ridership, in Emeryville was the opposite, that it either slightly increased or was flat. And so now that we see Emeryville coming out of the recession, we're seeing a spike in ridership. That's probably also a shift in transit modes, that with the cost of fuel as well, there are more people who are choosing to take the, you know, take Bart and take the Emery Go-Round. And as Bart has expanded a little bit into some of the suburbs. So I think it's a transit shift, as well as coming out of the recession, and I think we'll see this even become more of a capacity issue as some of, there's a few commercial developments that are becoming online in the next couple of years, and some housing as well. So this is something that you'll see when we get to requests for direction, we'll be saying a little bit more of. Since the beginning of the P-Bid, on average, the assessments have gone up about 2.7% per year. They were for the, for the commercial office retail, started at 17 cents per square foot. Now it's 25 cents per square foot, and so that averages to about 2.7% a year. The way the P-Bid is structured, it cannot go up more than 5% in any given year or cumulatively. So for example, if there was a zero increase one year, you could go up 10% the next, that, you know, over, in other words, over the 10-year period, you could not go up more than 50%. But the truth is, is that it's never been more than 5%. It's rarely been, and it's only recently it's been 5%. As you can see from the slides, the expenses are becoming more than the revenue, and the average has been 2.7% over every year. And I should add that the residences pay about $124.60 about per unit. They are not assessed on structural square foot, but by housing units. We have about 315 rental, 315 condo units that pay through conditions of approval. We were trying to figure out a rough guide on how much the rental units pay, but that's a little complicated in that rental units in residential zone areas don't pay. A lot of condos are rented out, and we don't really have a system to kind of, you know, track those changing uses. So if they're owner-occupied, they might not, they would not pay, and, but if they're leased out, they would pay. So that's a complication as well. So doing just some brief calculations, we think about a quarter of our residents probably pay into the system through either the conditions of approval or through being in rental housing. So the other issue-
Can I just ask a question? Don't we have, isn't about two-thirds of Emeryville are renters rather than owners?
It is, but it includes people who are renting out condos, so it's hard to kind of match up the units to, we don't have two-thirds rental housing. I mean, we do, but it's not apartments.
Commercial rental housing.
Right, exactly. It's not apartments. A lot of it is people renting out their home or renting out their condo unit. So it's a little difficult to kind of match that up. Okay, so the need for the long-term bus yard. Currently, the bus yard is on 67th Street, right on the Emeryville-Oakland-Berkley border, I guess depending on where you're standing on that street. And the current bus lease was extended through 2018, with LBA joining the TMA and about to join the board, so they were cooperative in that way. However, there is a six-month termination clause. LBA has been very clear that they have plans to develop the site in its entirety. The Emery Go-Round bus yard is just a piece of that site, which includes the former, called the Marshawn Building. And so that is really one whole parcel, really. And so they are unwilling to sell off a piece of the parcel or do anything long-term until they know what will happen with that site in the entirety, because it may be needed. There's some operational constraints. So with a six-month termination clause, you know, there's a real need to not be in kind of in crisis mode in terms of if LBA was to issue a termination clause in their lease. Some operational constraints. For example, the current operator does have some bus yard available in San Leandro, but first, it's really not a great idea to rely upon your vendor for your bus yard, because it's a, you know, defined contract term, and bus yards needs are, you'd really like to have 10, 20, 30 years of that. And also, operational constraints in terms of the deadhead runs. You know, going to the bus yard for maintenance, or starting in the morning, or going back in the evening, all that is time you have to pay. And so you want to have your bus yard as close as possible to your route as possible, as you can. It's been one of the issues with AC Transit, you know, that this is a center for a lot of their routes as well. Funding constraints. The TMA right now has, I think, about half a million dollars of cash reserves, but that really is needed for their cash flow. When the county gives the money versus when they have to pay their bills is, you know, not necessarily in sync. So they do not have deep pockets, but they do provide, they do have operating cost for lease that could be part of the solution. in cooperation with the TMA, we kind of came up with five potential possibilities. One is the current bus yard site, but as said, you know, LBA is really not interested in considering a bus yard until they know what they're going to do with the whole site. There's also a fair amount of time spent by the TMA and staff on looking at the I-580 underpass by Mandela Parkway in Oakland. However, WOKA and the City of Oakland asked for a lot of mitigations for that to occur in that location, including essentially a shuttle bus at no charge to Oakland residents or businesses going to the West Berkeley, West Oakland Bart. And the fact that this is money that can only be spent in Emeryville or for, or to benefit Emeryville, those that pay in, was not something that Oakland either understood or decided to understand.
Well, it's not really Oakland per se. It's the local West Oakland Association. It's not WOKA either. It's even somebody else.
But, so, so with, so there was a lot of effort put into that, and that was not going to happen. So there's now kind of three alternatives that staff and the TMA are now looking at. One is also under the 580 underpass, is also is owned by Caltrans. Caltrans was perfectly ready to sell us, or lease us, or lease the underpass under Mandela. They would probably be ready to lease, do a long-term lease for the underpass off of San Pablo Avenue, if we remember that the city has previously leased that property and used it to store vehicles. So it is consistent with what the use has been in the past. But of course, that property is also in Oakland and subject to Oakland planning review and conditions of approval. We think that it might be a little easier sell to Oakland than the Mandela piece, because it's in the southern part of the city. You could, for example, extend a route, you know, to that area and serve south Emeryville slash the northern, you know, edge of Oakland in a way that you really couldn't on Mandela. And that has a lot of, and then La Coss Street, the northern end of Emeryville, an alternative site. And I'll just go briefly through so you can get a sense of what that is. So that's the existing Emery Go-Round on 67th Street. To give you a sense of kind of the layout, and thank you, Charlie, for your whiz at doing the site management plan for this, to give you a sense of kind of what's there now and the amount, the kind of space that's needed. So this is the underpass at San Pablo Avenue, just to give you a sense of what it looks like now. Dark, not very well-used. Caltrans doesn't allow anything to be there that's of a permanent basis, but they won't let you buy it, but they would lease it. And it's very common for these underpasses to be used for vehicle storage. This is an idea of how the buses could be, how the bus yard could lay out in that area. And if you see that the way it would lay out with egress and, egresses on San Pablo and Adeline, and would not be as disturbing to the side streets. The other consideration was the northern end of La Coss Street. That's a pretty tight space there, and we're just really looking at any opportunities. It would, and so this is how it could lay out, not so great from operations, and much more limited space for the buses, it would be about for 16 buses. So in the expansion, it would have to be housed later, but the thought was better to have 16 where you know where they were, and worry about four or five than not have a place long-term for any of them. So we also, so we excluded a few other possibilities. One, as I said, we did exclude the, the underpass by Mandela, and the 67th Street, the current bus yard. There was also conversations around the corp yard, but there's, there's no room there as well. So San Pablo Avenue, MacArthur Underpass, the strengths are that it was formally used as a vehicle storage site, and it could provide south Emeryville access to Emery Go-Round service, both to MacArthur and around town. Concerns, of course, as I said, that it's a city of Oakland permitting process, the neighboring residents may have concerns, and it would be a long-term lease, not ownership, since it's to Caltrans right away.
Karen, if I could interrupt. You're not talking about the MacArthur underpass, you're talking about the 580.
580.
You should change that.
580. Sorry. Oops. So La Coss Street, the strengths there is that it's controlled by the City of Emeryville, it's within our borders, and it is a dead-end street at that location. Concerns, there is currently some on-street parking on that street, though there are, there is a parking lot used by the office complex that is adjacent to that street. There might be some loss of circulation. There's some possible title issues that would have to be researched, it's not clear who owns the land underneath the street, and it would take vacating that street, which, if you vacate the street, then the fee title reverts back to the owner. So we would have to do some research to see if that was property that the city owned or was privately owned, and we could condemn it too, but-
Lacoste's heirs.
Yes, it could be the Lacoste heirs. So we've not done that work yet, unless we had some sense of that was something that was viable from the council's point of view. It is adjacent to the freeway. We could put some vines there, but it may not be exactly what you want in that location. And as I said, it doesn't have the same capacity as the other sites, and it's probably a higher capital investment to do this site than to do under the I-580 overpass. The other alternative is for to kind of go back out there again and, you know, pound the pavement and look at other potential sites, including any that are public-controlled, such as other streets that maybe could be vacated, as well as private sites that not just are on the market, but may not be on the market, and that the city could continually get under its authority to be used as a bus site. So other upcoming issues. In addition to the capacity issue, which is, I would say, in the next three years, before the renewal of the P-Bid and the long-term bus needs, there's also the proposed Emeryville-Oakland-Berkley Alternative Transportation Plan, the EBOT. A lot of that plan, that plan really is for the, as well as the P-Bid renewal, and the need for potentially some additional alternative funding sources. So if you look at the proposed EBOT, it really does overlap in some parts the current Emery Go-Round route. Certainly, the Emery Go-Round does that connectivity that the EBOT is trying to do from West Berkeley all the way through to West Oakland in the Emeryville area. In addition to that, the TMA currently administers the West Berkeley Shuttle, which is a good part of what would be maybe EBOT, the Berkeley part. And the Emery Go-Round and the West Berkeley Shuttle now kiss, so to speak, at the West Berkeley Bowl. But there isn't service going south from the southern border of Emeryville. So right now, that's just a study. There's no, there's no there-there, and there's no, there's even no money there. There's not even a there-there, much less money to make a there-there. But, you know, as this goes forward on, you know, obviously, the Emery Go-Round, what it does now is a lot of what this is trying to achieve. So that's just something, and the TMA has both a board member, which is on the Policy Committee of EBOT, and also Trudy, presser from Gray Bowen, sits on the Technical Advisory Committee. So the TMA will be very much involved in the EBOT study. P-Bid renewal. As I said, the current P-Bid sunsets in 2016, and some of the concerns are that there've been some changes, some, how do I put it, some considerations of the impacts of Prop 218 that could potentially impact the P-Bid in its current form. And this really has to, is, goes to the point that an assessment district can only be levied on parcels that, there has to be a specific benefit that the parcels that pay into the P-Bid provide. And so it's not a general benefit, that's, you know, it's good for the air, it's good for the circulation, it's good for the overall economic climate, but there has to be an actual nexus there, some, almost like a traffic impact fee that you have to say, there's a nexus there. And to the extent that there's any general community benefit from the Emery Go-Round, there may be some supplemental funding would be needed. And so you might have a P-Bid that would, you know, if you looked at the system as it is now, you know, conceivably, the next engineer's report would say that the specific benefit is different than how it was- the spec, you know, the specific benefit is different than how it was formulated the last time. And then it might be a general community benefit that would then, to keep the system at its current level or at an increased level to meet capacity, might require an alternative type of funding. And then the P-Bid renewal itself, um, is, would be in 2016, but we would recommend it to be done before that. So some alternative funding options, of course, are grants, uh, I think particularly for the capital needs of the system. There are also some voter-approved city taxes that could be used to cover some of the general benefit. If it was determined that there was some general benefit that was beyond, you know, the specific benefit level of, um, funding, um, that is at the current level or expanded level of service, and those could be a sales tax, it could be a citywide community services assessment district on residents or some other type of city tax. It could be dedicated parking meter revenue. That would be something else that potentially might make sense to use for the shuttle. Uh, and there's always the good old general fund and perhaps, you know, some other alternatives. So what we are asking for is some policy direction. Uh, one is preferred bus yard alternatives of, if there are any thoughts about kind of what we laid out in terms of either La Coss Street being alternative or, um, the I-580 under, uh, by San Pablo Avenue, or neither one. And staff should look at other alternatives that we could bring under the city's control for a bus yard. And so if we had some general direction about that, we would bring back, you know, fuller information in the fall. Uh, the second is around the issue around, uh, current capacity needs. This was a very broad brush in terms of where, where the Immigrant Round is in terms of the need to expand, um, capacity to meet current level of ridership. For this one, we just, um, are asking for direction to return in the fall with, you know, a more full-blown proposal and what the capital needs as well as potential operating needs are to meet the demand that we think is going to happen in the next two or three years. And then also, um, to, um, start a thought about a process to think about some alternative funding, um, for the Immigrant Round in the future. With the Immigrant, with the P-Bid ending in 2016, uh, staff believes that any alternative funding should be thought about in 2014. If it was a city tax, it would have to be on the ballot the same time as that there is an election and the next election is 2014. We think that it is wise to know where you are in terms of that alternative funding before the P-Bid, you'd go out for the P-Bid because you kind of, you know, if, you would need to know that. And that also staff suggests that the P-Bid, um, be brought out for renewal in 2015 rather than waiting till 2016. Gives you another bite of the apple, so to speak, um, if there's some questions there. So that really is.
Okay, I believe Ruth, you had a question?
Yeah, Karen, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, in terms of the bus yard, is there a need, wherever, wherever this ends up going, is there a need for some kind of administrative trailer or anything else, or can it just literally be buses parked?
No, it includes an office space. It does include an office space and right now, it's what I call like a double ride, double wide trailer.
Okay.
Uh, so it needs water hookup, it needs sewer hookup, it needs gas, electricity lines. It's one of the things that we think that Lacoste is the more expensive option because that obviously doesn't exist at what's currently a street. Some of that might exist, um, at the 580 under the, um, by San Pablo.
I have a couple of questions, Karen. Have we talked to Pete Ginni? What?
Kurt, I wonder if we could hear from the public.
Okay.
Sure.
And then ask our questions.
Would you please cue up behind Karen? And you have three minutes, so Karen will get to, just wait just for a second for Karen to get stopwatch ready.
City clerk, excuse me.
So she's, she has two hats tonight.
So can I sit down or what?
No, 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 just, no, no, I'm just saying.
Just wait first.
Okay, yes. I can pass these off then?
You can pass them up.
Perfect. Just give them to the city clerk.
Are you here to speak on this item?
Are you?
Well, it's affecting us. Yes, I will now that we're here.
Hi.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's all about transportation.
Well, just, just hold your comments to them.
Two should give to each. There's two, right? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, you ready Karen?
Yes.
Okay, now you're up.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Kathy Pavlasky. I'm the owner of Yellow Sunshine Cab in Emeryville and I represent every single one of these gentlemen standing or sitting here. Um, it's amazing to me that this came up tonight because I wasn't aware of this, but there was nowhere in this ETMA that it stated that it was going to put 50 owners out of business, your Emery Go-Round. You never had a research done on how much business you've taken away from us. And, um, I stand before you today, um, representing these gentlemen because we have been, uh, sent a letter from the city attorney, from the chief of police stating that our insurance policies would go up to a million dollars, um, for the municipal code for 8.18. With that being said, Mr. City Attorney and I have come to an agreement that they wouldn't put this into effect until the first of the year. However, with the municipal code being at a million dollars, it was never enforced for the last three years and now they're trying to implement it. Why? Because the shuttle services are now needing more money and they want to get it from the businesses that they're stealing the transportation business from, that being us. We are here today to, to change a municipal code and each of, one of the representatives will see the letter that was sent out on all the taxi drivers' behalf and why the insurance requirements for taxi cabs should not be at the rate that they are from an insurance professional. This shuttle service, Emery Go-Round, is putting all of these gentlemen and myself at a slow death and out of business. And now you want more money from us for our insurance. We are going to strike. We are going to class action lawsuit, um, to let everybody know that the taxi cabs are a vital part of the community here in Emeryville. And your shuttle services that you're giving all this money to is coming out of our pockets because we're, now you want to impose a million-dollar, uh, policy, um, which is not affordable for us because you're taking our business away. We are a vital part of the community. The letters that you received are from insurance professionals stating that the municipal code should be changed because Emeryville has 10,080 residents. Berkeley, Albany, they do not carry a million-dollar policy. And we understand now why you want a million-dollar policy, so they can take a piece of our money so you can grow their business and forget about us. We would like to have a, a meeting with every single city council member. Mr. Attorney and I have kind of butted heads. Um, he said that you guys voted for a million-dollar policy, but it had never been enforced.
Thank, thank you very much. Your three minutes is up. Okay, Ken. How are you, Ken?
Okay.
Good.
First, let me say, uh, I think the Immigrant Round is a ve- very vital service that's essential for the city. However, I wouldn't consider the renewal of a P-Bid. I mean, you know, it's not really a valid assessment and I think it could be challenged. I mean, to be valid, an assessment must meet two substantial requirements. First, it must confer a special benefit on the assessed properties over and above those conferred, conferred on all properties in the district or on the public at large. Second, each parcel can only be assessed by an amount proportional to the special benefit it receives. It's good that the TMA does a survey to find out what the public thinks, but it never does any survey to find out what the property owners think. I mean, clearly, this is a general public bus service, so it really doesn't confer any special benefits on anybody. The level of assessments really needs to be looked at. Should a retail store like IKEA get the same rate as an office? Um, one office, one office member of our group, um, has about 15 employees that uses it, pays $50,000 a year, next year maybe $55,000. He could send a limousine for each one of those people. The governance issue, you have seven dedicated seats for the largest contributors. Well, all the largest contributors don't even make the majority of the assessments and then you have dedicated seats, so, um, the majority of the board is controlled by people and those are just employees of companies. The manager of IKEA is on the board. They think they only represent IKEA, not everybody. So what is the encouragement for any property owners to participate if seven members of the board already guaranteed seats? Shouldn't every seat be elected by everybody? Who is riding the bus? I think it's very important that you do a survey and find out who's riding and so that the assessments that you levy in the next few years are more accurate. You have corporate members and business members, but the only real members you have are property owners. Those are the people that are paying the assessment. What's the point of a business member or a corporate member? Doesn't make any sense. And then you have a public member that doesn't pay the assessment at all. That doesn't, that's not, shouldn't be a voting position. Now you have this board election, one vote per property. So somebody who pays $200 a month, a year, has the same vote as somebody that pays $50,000 a year. Is that really fair? And then there's no way to change the bylaws without a unanimous vote. Well, we know what that means. It'll never be changed. So, does it have to go to court to get changed, to make it fair? I'll just leave you with those questions. Again, I think the Immigrant Round is essential and its sustainability depends on fair and equitable funding and following law. Now, I'm representing property owners, it's not my personal opinion.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Any other comments, public comments? Hi Laura. Come on up.
Uh, Lauren Westreich, I actually, um, have a couple of questions more than comments and you guys can choose to ask them or not. I will leave it up to you. Um, one of the things I noticed in the presentation was that 7% of the ridership is school-based. I think that's very interesting because the P-Bid doesn't address that at all. Um, so I think that that, just like I said, interesting. Um, and I'd love to know when the buses are particularly overcrowded and what routes they're on because a lot of the times when I'm on the bus, there's five people on it. And I, I believe that there are times when it's overcrowded, I'd just like to know when. And, um, has anyone thought of maybe using the AC Transit Yard in partnership with them? Is that a possibility? I don't know. Um, and then the, uh, in terms of the assessment levels, um, the, the traffic impact fee, Emery Go-Round assessment, like it makes sense to really consider those, like to, they're not completely separate beasts in terms of the benefit to a commercial business, probably not for retail, but for office, warehouse, that kind of stuff. And then, um, in terms of the assessment levels, like Ken mentioned it briefly, the, the needs of the corporate community may be different from the needs of like the retail community in the sense that the routes that, you know, like the Hollis Street route, you know, really the focus is on commuters, getting people in and out to businesses, whether they live here, work somewhere else, vice versa. Um, and the retail needs, they have to run all day on the weekends, you know, that's a very different need. And I don't know, I don't run a transportation service, but it may be that running all day and weekends costs a lot more than running just during commute hours and there may be a way to consider that as part of the P-Bid assessment. Maybe there need to be more than two different levels. I don't know, just thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Mr. Sears.
Good evening. Jeff Sears with Wareham Development. I've had the pleasure of being on the board for over a decade. I was president when the P-Bid was first started, so I've seen a lot of changes, not as many as some of you have been here from the start as Karen mentioned, but this is a big success. The city seeded it with a little bit, for a little bit of time, and it's really worked out. Now with success comes some growing pains. We're getting bigger and we are changed from a point where we had trouble getting people to come to our board meetings to people are desperate to be on the board and that's good. That's good. We do have public meetings and so anyone can come. Ken religiously comes and he comments and he has good ideas. Not every idea is, you know, not every single person's on board with every idea, not of Ken's, not of mine, but we like that dialogue. And so the growth of the system is causing more people to be interested. That's good. The board is committed and has said so to Ken, but others, and was saying to you tonight, committed to review the way it's governing itself, the constituency of the board, you know, how we're running the system. We think it's very efficient. And I, I do want to point out two things that got mentioned quickly here, but were really important to the board. You know, it was like a little startup and it got bigger and you often need skills that are different for a bigger company than the startup. So the last two or three years, the board worked really hard to look at everybody that was providing services. And we went through a public RFP process with lots of respondents and came up with Gray Bowen as a, an operator that can take us into the future and is doing a good job as we're heading into the future. And then, once they got their, their, you know, in the system and ready, we bid out publicly with a lot, with competition, the main operating contract and it, I think, improved the operator partner that we have now and we think that's going to be beneficial. So, that's all happened in the last two or three years and now we hear the public giving feedback. So we're committed to review all that. And I just wanted to let you know that, we're interested in your feedback, we're interested in their feedback and it's not going to happen all tonight. It's an ongoing process. We have some issues, we're looking for your help, we're looking for anyone's help with these things. You know, because it's not easy when you're successful and people are using you and we want that use to grow in the future. We want more people out of their vehicles, their single-driver vehicles into communal things. We're figuring out how to do other last mile connections with a car share that the TMA helped bring to Emeryville. You know, we got bus racks on all the buses, so we're trying to always think about not just how to do it, what we're doing, but what to do next. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Hi Betsy.
Hello.
How are you?
Betsy Cooley. I hadn't planned on saying anything, but I did want to, um, say thank you to the board members of the, um, Emery Go-Round. I've attended a number of their meetings and I think, I've real, been really impressed with the, their intellect and the amount of work that they, hard work that they put into it and I think it's a great service. I'm now retired and I don't take it nearly as often as I used to, but, um, I, I think it's a great service and I hope you can figure this all out.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other public comment? Before I close, public comment? Go on once, twice? Okay. Counsel, counsel, have any questions?
I, I have a couple of questions. First of all, when we're talking about special benefits, um, what constitutes a special benefit? Would for instance, a stop right in front of your business be a special benefit for the P-Bid?
It's really an engineering, um, issue, but not necess, I mean certainly a, having a bus in front of your business would be above and beyond, but certainly, I believe the, the plan identifies a, um, the loc, you know, the business or the, the parcel being located within a certain distance of the service line.
Okay, a certain distance?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do we have any, uh, kind of ballpark figures about the, the cost of the, the bus In particular, the one at San Pablo and, um, and Adeline? No?
Underneath the, um.
Underneath the.
The, under 580.
The freeway, yes.
Um, I can only, Helen, you might recall and I can't off the top of my head how much, because we had previously leased, I'm not sure if it was that particular parcel.
I don't recall what that is, but we could get that information. We've leased it in the past, but on a, uh, month-to-month basis.
Yeah, I think, well, we had a two-year, I think it was a two-year lease and we, obviously we paid monthly payments, so.
But in addition to the, in addition to the cost of leasing it from Caltrans, uh, there would also be the cost of the capital improvement, so it would be usable as a bus yard.
Mm-huh.
Including, I don't know what the utilities are at that site, but because there is an office building. Now in that location, there is some storefront that potentially could be used as opposed to the double ride, but you know, that would be part of what would be looked at if this is a, is a, is an option to be pursued. Uh, we didn't want to put that much staff time unless we knew it was something that was at least a possibility because it, you know, it will take some staff time to, to come up with a, a, a proposal that is more fleshed out.
Anything else, Jack?
I, I've forgotten it, but I may come back to it.
Jennifer?
Um, yeah, I really appreciate all the background information and all the folks who, um, came out this evening to speak. I have heard rumors or rumblings about this before, but I just wanted to ask in public, um, what is it about, um, charging riders? What are the parameters legally speaking?
There's no public benefit, there's no special benefit.
I'm, I'm just asking if, if the P-Bid is the reason that there's no, um, actual fares?
I can talk historically.
If you want.
You're the transit professionals, but historically, the reason has been, is that the thought was, is that, um... the thought was, is that the, the hassle of having to deal with fare boxes in, you know, and potentially was not worth what you would get in terms of fare unless you set the fare, you know, at a level, let's say, of AC Transit, in which case you would probably affect your ridership. I mean, this is a last mile, so there are people who are already paying to take AC Transit to get to, is there people who, who take the bus to the MacArthur-Bart station and get on the Immigrant Round, as well as people who have already paid into the Bart system? And so to, to do another fare where they may have already done a bus plus a Bart, to, to make it at a level that it would warrant the hassles of a fare box and, and the drivers having to deal with the money, in the past, it just didn't seem to be on the whole, something that you would get a whole lot out of from the, the issues that you would generate.
Okay. Well, I just think when we're talking about new revenue, I'm, it's not something that I'm necessarily in favor of, but I feel like it's a question that needs to be looked into or, or discussed. And the other question then is, and with Clipper cards, et cetera, there's a lot less of a hassle for those who have Clipper cards, it's more of a regional approach now, at least, to fares. What are the conversations with AC Transit? It seems like AC Transit may have lost some riders with Emery Go-Round, and certainly, I feel like Emeryville has lost some service, perhaps, with Emery Go-Round. Again, not a criticism, because I think Emery Go-Round is a good service, but what are the conversations with AC Transit, whether it's partnering on space capacity in their yard, which I thought was a great suggestion, or their service, et cetera?
Would, would you like to address that question? Do you have information?
We've actually...
Oh, come on, to the microphone, please.
We actually have a meeting scheduled with AC Transit.
Lower the mic. Sue, talk to the mic.
With, night, with AC Transit next week, another partnering meeting, but we, we do have meetings with AC Transit. They've had quite a bit of turnover.
Okay.
The last year or two, but we did address the issue of shared, using their bus yard, and the folks that were on board then were not open to that idea of sharing the yard with us. We do partner with them. We actually have a fueling contract with them. All of our fuel is, is through their fueling facility in Emeryville, so we have a relationship with them, and we are actually meeting with a new representative from AC next week to discuss more of, kind of, becoming, we're more of a partner than a competitor there.
Have you had any conversations regarding PG&E on their site?
No.
No, that might be something else. And I also noticed under the, as you're going into Oakland on Mandela, it looks like there's like a wrecking yard underneath the freeway there, so somebody has rented it, it'd be nice to clean it up and put clean buses in there instead of what they're doing right now. So any other...
I have one last question, which is, the new operator that you have contracted with, MV Transportation, are they a unionized organization?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to concentrate on what we've been asked to do, and we've been asked to comment on the bus yard alternatives and several other things. In looking at the bus yard alternatives, I believe the one of, in, in West Oakland down by the structure of the Bay Bridge underneath there is not a doable thing. There's too much, too much opposition to it, or too much emphasis on trying to get so much from the system. However, I, I do think, and I'm, I'm not in favor of pursuing the LaCoste Street. Number one, LaCoste is not a dead-end street. It's a circular street that not only, you know, you can use it to cut around those, those buildings there, so that and the underlying title to the street, I don't, and it's not, it's not a big space. I don't think it's workable. I hope we don't waste any further time on it. And as far as the, the present location, the handwriting is on the wall. There is big money going into the development, that, that particular development. It's going to be beautiful when it's finished, but unfortunately, there's not a place there for EGR. So I hope we concentrate on under 580 between San Pablo and Adeline. That is a workable site, it has enough space, it has a close proximity to get water and power and all the, that kind of good thing. And if you can once work it out with Oakland Planning and Caltrans, it is a site that eliminates all the problems of deadheading, all that other good stuff. So I would prefer, my preferences here is to focus on working with Caltrans, and number two, I, I'm glad you brought up about AC Transit, because I think we should really pursue joint occupancy of that AC Transit yard. They have got plenty of room in there, the, and it's, now the big mantra for the feds and the state is cooperation, people working together. There, if, if Emery Go-Round and AC Transit work together, the possibility of that they're getting more grants in terms of providing transportation is enhanced. And I hope when you talk to AC Transit, you push that button, because it's not just a giveaway from them, they're going to make money off of it, and their ability to be perceived as an operation that has some smarts about working with other people will certainly be enhanced. So I, I want to make those comments. We've got to get moving on this alternative bus yard. On, if I can move on, on the, the current service capacity, Lauren had a good point. There are times when there's two people on the buses, and there's other times when you need a can opener to get in and out. So we need more information. When are the high-peak periods? What is the real nexus between increased ridership and increased, you know, operation facility? Or is there a better way to schedule? So we need more information, I think, before we can say more about that. And the same thing is true of the alternative funding, and the, I think the P-Bid timelines, Karen, you hit it right on the head, we've got to be ahead of the wave there. That's my comment.
And I agree. When you come back in, in this, this fall, bring us additional information, especially when it comes to cost, because it's really hard to say, give you guidance, and when we have no idea what the costs are going to be. And especially when it's talking about property in Oakland, I meant have a meeting with their planning department and see, talk to their, their electors, and see what type of feedback you get from them before you come back to us, so...
Mayor Brinkman, I'd like to get a sense from the council if they agree with this focus on the bus yard alternatives, the, the San Pablo to Adeline under the 580, and really pushing hard on AC Transit.
Well, I, I think I would prefer to push really hard on AC Transit. I mean, that all makes sense.
Well, I like to have two strings to my bow.
I, I agree, but I, until we talk to the city of Oakland, it's really kind of hard to make that push.
Well, I, I think we're trying, we're trying to get some direction about which, you know, should we pursue that? And so it'd be helpful to know...
Yeah, I think you should pursue it.
Yeah.
And I, and I'm getting the sense that LaCoste is not necessarily, okay, I'm seeing...
I don't think there's any answer.
Okay. So I think, I think that gives us, obviously, I think, my sense is likely that anything to happen with AC Transit is probably going to be, take a little bit more time, whereas the, I think, trying to work something out with Caltrans is probably something that's a little bit more doable.
Can we quote you on that, Caltrans? I don't know.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate the efforts of trying to use LaCoste, you know, in a better way than what it's being used for now. I'm personally, if it could be reconfigured or something, I, I personally am open to considering that, because I don't think the way it's, it's there is serving the city very well at all.
Just one quick bit of information. I work a lot on the Oakland...
Quick.
...underpass. Caltrans is not the one that's hard to make the deal with, the city of Oakland. So if you're asking us to work on that with staff, that's going to need some political support as well.
That could happen. So, okay, thank you. I'm going to close this meeting.
No, did staff get their direction?
Well, I think we have a direction.
They didn't weigh in on, on anything other than...
What I understood was...
I'm, I'm hearing that only one, and that's Councilman Racken, is really interested in LaCoste, so I'm, I'm...
Right.
So we're not going to pursue LaCoste.
Alternative funding, we didn't even talk about that.
Right.
Well, I think those, we are...
We'll come back in the fall.
No, there's only one meeting right now.
Go, go ahead, Mike.
I think the idea was, we were just throwing out some different ideas about, in terms of alternative funding. I mean, if, if you really do have a, a sense at this point, but I think we were going to come back in the fall to sort of flesh that out a little bit better for you. I think we just wanted to identify that, that's something we need to look at.
Well, yeah, because it, it says in the fall with service capacity needs, and when you have needs, you have costs.
Right.
So I mean, without hearing the needs, it's hard to define the cost.
Understood.
Well, one of the issues was with the new vendor, they're still trying to, you know, there's some efficiencies that are being made, and so wanted to give a few months to kind of shake down the new vendor before, you know, then they would have a much better idea. They're doing some route analysis, so it really was a heads-up just to let the council know that the capacity is an issue, but we were planning on returning in the fall, you know, with the new vendor more firmly in place, and more analysis to come back to give you some real numbers around capital costs of operating. And same thing with the alternative funding, it was really a heads-up, that particularly, if it's something that you wish to put on the ballot, that it would be 2014, and, you know, that's not going to be that long before that happens. And so, again, not necessarily asking you to choose which one, or if it's general fund, but to give you a sense of the timeline that staff would be asking, you know, we, you know, be coming back in the fall probably for some serious guidance about what to do.
And I'd just like to put out there that when you do come back with that, I would like to hear if you've had conversations with other potential transportation funding sources. Nobody has a lot of extra money right now, especially with Measure B-1 failing last fall, but talking with ACTC at the county level, talking with MTC, what, you know, in terms of regional, there's a lot going on. We're going to hear about that later tonight. Talking with Bart, you know, Bart is well-served by Emery Go-Round very well, and so there are some new directors on the board in Bart, and AC Transit, which we've mentioned. And, and I'm not opposed to considering a city tax of some kind of general benefit, the parking meter revenue. I think there are lots of possibilities, so I look forward to more robust discussion when we have more information on that.
Okay. With that, I'll close that meeting. Your question about the insurance, this...